Can I sit with you? I will hold all of this.
It was a public conference, why did I jam? I'm sorry, I sat here on that. That's where they have the viewing and the jam at.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Glad to see y'all here on tonight. Sure your concerns for the city of Greensboro. As always, we'll open it up with prayer. Um, tonight, I'll ask that Mr. Butler will open us up with prayer on tonight.
All most gracious, Father Lord God, we're just coming for you tonight, Lord. Thank you for who you are and what you are. God, we ask you right in the name of Jesus, Lord God, that you will allow your Spirit to do well in this meeting today, God. We thank you for your unity. Thank you for love, Lord God. And we thank you, Lord God, that you will be on one accord, and we'll be so thankful, Lord, you've been there, you've brought down in praise, it's in Jesus, and we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Let the minutes reflect that everyone is present on tonight. Uh, number three on God, Julie DeProuve, April fifteen, twenty twenty-four, Reverend Session Minutes. Counselor, we've been giving those Reverend Session Minutes, but we have not read over. I give it this time to read over those and ask that you would show that you're ready to vote on those, accept those, then about to raise them up your right hand. If everybody's ready, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the April fifteen, twenty twenty-four Reverend Session Minutes.
Motion. Second.
It's been second in the first discussion. No further discussion, all those in favor, let me know, I raise your right hand. Thank you so much. Next on the, uh, agenda is item number four, the approval by April fifteen, twenty twenty-four Executive Session Minutes. Ask that you assign those and pass them to your left, signifying that you're ready and you accept whatever those minutes say. At this time, I will accept the motion to approve the Executive Session Minutes.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been second in the first discussion. No further discussion, all those in favor, let me know, I raise your right hand. You're down with the decision. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is number five, asking that Mr. Schmocker Smith come and approach. Schmocker is our area duty street supervisor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, Schmocker, Schmager, I just, um, took the supervisor position in last, within two weeks, February, not February, sorry, April twenty-second. Um, since I've been on, um, supervising, been supervising, we have, um, get a lot of, with some asphalt, we should pick up, um, grass, ton, and litter, um, pick up. We have some curb, curbing, um, cleaning around, um, certain areas, and, um, and today we did some storm drain, after that rain, we could see, um, some of the affected areas within the city that need, um, more attention. And, um, when, since the water was still fresh on the trees, we should see how lower that was to, um, to cars or buses, whatever. We started cutting down on Bush Street and, um, or by Ebenezer Church, there's just some areas we had to deal today. And, um, there's some more, um, paving to be done, and some of them that we want, want to be, we had a contract, a contract to, to, um, do out, do out the city. With the pipelines and stuff, we are looking forward to doing some of those. Um, that's all I have at this moment, um, in the process.
Chief, what's up, Governor? Counselor, let me say.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, I, I welcome to the team.
I think so.
In your two weeks, any immediate needs that stand out to you that you need from the street department, if this is possible?
Okay, um, yes, I have made arrangement for some equipment to come in, it should be here tomorrow. Come in, um, rent a loader, skid steer loader, and a dump truck to help, uh, serve out some of these affected areas we have so far.
What about your man, Paul?
Man, Paul, we, um, we looking forward to hiring, um, soon, um, full-time and part-time.
Thank you so much. Um, but hearing that also, um, just add on, we went ahead and rented a dump truck because we have not did our, our cleanup. We did not do that in the month of April, so hopefully when that truck comes in, we'll be able to, to complete our cleanup that we usually, usually do every year. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Borlow, your number six, could be a mind lights and request of store?
Si.
He's not present at this time. We move down to number, item number seven. Ask that variance two, twenty-four, oh, and ten sixty, twenty-five, circle. variance request to sub- survive property located ten sixty, twenty-five, serving to three lots. Property is on R one, located in residential district. At this moment, uh, Mayor Portem, Neil would be allowed to take over this, uh, this his, near and dear to me, and he'd say, uh, property is on my door. So I would not, I would not engage in this conversation.
Mr. Brody, come on.
Mr. Mayor, pretend before, um, before the applicant's, I might pass out the captain's staff report.
Okay.
You would like to pass me down to the trumpets, if you don't have copies of them. Um, page one and page two is showing the preliminary of the plot of land before and after. And it's also showing, um, plots of land with about the same size, lots, and y'all can pass it through.
Yes.
And I'm Ashley's mom, I'm speaking on behalf of Ashley. She was coming before you tonight to ask that the land be allowed to be subdivided into three lots. The lots would then be, um, still a little over a half an acre each. The property now itself is one and a half acres. She's had the land, um, preliminary subdivided into three lots, and if you look at on those, um, page one and page two, it shows you before and after. Page two shows you where, um, she had baseline surveying and engineering out of Watkinsville, Georgia with Matthew Omer. He came down and did it, and then he also, um, went into the ordinance and looked at the setbacks. And so on that second page, you'll see where he kind of like, not a house, but put the dimensions where that house would be built. And if you look at those examples, we pulled up some of the houses in that subdivision that sits on lots that size. And one or two of them have, like, the size of house that can actually fit on them, more than a half acre. It said that each home would have to be at least fifteen hundred heated square feet or larger. And it means for it to be a half an acre, the home would meet all those requirements. Oh, yeah, we're doing that, that will not only just, um, you know, allow her to be able to build, but we'll create a few homes in the City of Greensboro to also create a revenue for the City of Greensboro. And we understand, you know, it was in the ordinance saying that they didn't want the, um, they didn't want the land divided up, but looking at the dates that I seen on there, that was written about thirty years ago, but surely times and the needs of the city and of subdivision have changed since then. And I also read through it, you know, to see if y'all don't have the, um, the package that from back then, there have been a couple of things that have been, um, updated since then in there. And the fifteen hundred square foot of the home was one of them. They used to, um, allow smaller houses, but now it's fifteen hundred square foot now.
Can I ask a question?
Any questions from counsel?
Ms. Wee?
Yes.
You said this lot about an acre and a half?
It's an acre and a half.
It's, it is an acre and a half.
Mm-hmm.
And you want to put three, three, uh?
Three homes.
Uh, you could have, you know, what size she told me to be?
No, we didn't do that, um, if you look at the, I think it said on page two, he just draw showing that you could put a house for fifteen hundred up to twenty-five hundred square foot, if you want to, depending on how you feel. And most of the homes over there are ranging around that. And like I said, if you look at some of the little examples, it shows a couple of houses that are more than fifteen hundred square feet that are only this, about a half acre.
Yeah, another question, um, have you, have you considered just putting one home in that area?
Yes, we did.
You said one?
We thought, well, we know we can put one, but if we could put three, we would like to put three.
Any questions, Brew? Mr. Smith, got it?
I also read, you know, um, when I read through the package, and it, I think it had about ten different things for compliance up over in that subdivision. Um, the homes over there, everything is not, let me see, how should I say it? Um, everybody ain't in accordance with the, the guidelines of subdivision, as far as the homes over there. Now, I'm not going to name my, not if it was square footage, but things that, that the ordinance required.
All right, no more questions. I'll accept the motion to request or deny this request?
Uh, maybe we have enough issues to speak, to reload.
All right, Brad, keep it coming. Two men.
You want to, you want to speak first?
Stay on.
You've got the, you've got the variance, but there's Stuart Bravus, who's the lady speaking, opposition to it.
Hey, my name is Dina Stewart, I own my lot on ten forty Twin Pines Drive and eight, I own a home on ten forty Twin Pines Drive and lot one, ten forty Twin Pines Circle. The house originally that we built was built through covenants along with all of the others, all the neighbors that were living on ten, Twin Pines Drive and ten, Twin Pines Circle, raise your hands. We all built the board in two covenants, and originally the covenants, the square footage was two thousand. It was dropped to fifteen hundred, it currently stands at eighteen hundred square foot. The lots, according to the covenants, there's to be one house built per lot. And the house has to sit with the thing, the house facing the road. So two houses sitting behind the first house would break that covenant as well. There are several things that break the covenants of the subdivision. We welcome people coming and building in our subdivision and building according to the covenants that we have built to and adhered to when we bought land and built. Yes, it was thirty years ago, my dad built the first house in that subdivision, but we have maintained the covenants, and our neighbors want to maintain the covenants. We love our neighborhood, it's a safe neighborhood, we watch after each other, and we want to keep our neighborhood like it is. I have a petition signed by every homeowner and landowner in our subdivision that does not want this variance passed. And that what should have been included with, from the, yeah, planning and zoning board voted it down, but it's against the covenants. And so we just ask you to take all of that into consideration.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Robert Allain, and my wife Carolyn and I own the property at ten fifty-one Twin Pines Circle, which is also known as Lot thirteen D. Our lot is located directly across the street from the lot requesting the variance. We have three concerns with the proposed variance. One, the covenants that were in existence when we bought our lot and are still on file with county and in effect today state that no lot may be subdivided, and that changes to the covenant must be approved by two-thirds majority of the residents of Twin Pines subdivision. To my know, excuse me, to my knowledge, no such change has been proposed, and all the residents of Twin Pines subdivision have signed a petition against this subdivision of Lot five A. Second, the city county ordinance requires the subdivision being for low-density housing. The requested variance has an easement for the driveway for the three houses that will have the cars from the four, from four different houses, mine and the three new ones, entering Twin Pines Circle from two driveways that are within twenty feet of each other. To me, this does not meet the litmus test for low-density. Third, I do not know if any of the city council has looked at the property. The back one-third of the property drops off at a steep angle of approximately forty-five degrees for a height of about twenty-five feet. Referring back to the existing covenants, each single-family housing is required to be a minimum of eighteen hundred square feet. I am not an architect, but I, it appears to me that it ne, that it would be next to impossible to build that size home on either of the proposed back two lots. With these items in mind, we respectfully request the city council to disapprove the variance for Lot five A on Twin Pines Circle. Respectfully submitted, Robert Nash Allain and Karen Fulcham Allain. Question?
Thank you, Counselor. My name is Tommy Cummings, my wife would you do a coming sheet with me? My wife and I purchased Lot fourteen D on Twin Pines Circle in Greensboro in April nineteen ninety-nine. The address for this lot is ten thirty-one Twin Pines Circle, Greensboro, Georgia. We purchased Lot fourteen D with a knowledge of existing covenants. One of which states that the lots are limited to legal co, that the lots are limited to one single-family dwelling per lot. In fact, this covenant of one single-family dwelling per lot was one of the influences of us to purchase this lot. The plan of these lots, as well as the covenants are due to record in the Green County Court, often in Green County, Georgia. This lot located at ten sixty Twin Pines Circle, for which a variant request has been made, is the same lot as five D of the lots covered by these covenants. And by the way, these covenants state in the records at courthouse that they automatically renew every ten years for another ten-year period unless it's signed by a majority of the residents in, in the subdivision. I believe that the covenants of these lots are to be binding and legal. According to the covenants of lots on Twin Pines Circle, changes to the covenant can only be made by the legal approval of two-thirds of the lot owners. It is my observation that owners of the lots in this Twin Pines subdivision have done a good job adhering to the property covenants. In fact, as was mentioned earlier, several of the people that deal in the subdivision have been there for over twenty-five years. I don't suggest to send again to tell you that I know all the rules, laws that govern covenants versus changes that might be made by zoning boards and city officials, that's not my job. However, we consider in this situation with existing covenants and in terms of right and wrong. I do believe that allowing this variance for ten sixty Twin Pines Circle is wrong. On behalf of myself and my wife Geneva, we request that the Greensboro City Council, that the variant request to subdivide the property at ten sixty Twin Pines Circle, also known as Mountain Partridge Chief one-two-zero-zero-zero-six-three-zero, be denied as desired by the residents and as recommended by the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Board. Thank you, respectfully.
All right, anybody?
I did want to clear up a few items that they had said, and I totally understand that, and I can understand the concern about, um, the neighborhood. But I am too, I'm not a, um, a architect, but, uh, the person who did the surveying, that's what they're, they're gonna do, that's what they do. And as far as the land in the back, they have basements, a house with a basement was considered for that area. And then too, when you're building, you don't always have to build out, you can build up. And building up will give you how many square foot that you want. So I just ask that that's being taken into consideration too, and like I said, there are other ordinances as they also, um, inputted. But do we get to pick and choose which one we're doing, okay? And that.
Thank you. All right, I'll accept the motion to request, or the, uh, I'll accept the motion to request or deny this request.
Motion to deny. Second.
All in favor, let me know, I raise your right hand. Three. Deny.
Thank you so much. Bring us down to number eight, in consideration of the bidding and nomination, receiving a proportion of parts from number G zero six, zero, 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 six, seven, zero, of three twenty-one, eleven, of L C, next to the city's street state project, this K L four?
Yes, sir, if you want me to just spend this right here.
We'll do that in executive session.
Yes, sir. I think I'm next. Okay, yes.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council. Item number nine, um, should be in your package, it's a transportation project framework agreement, the Georgia Department of Transportation. Tonight, I'm requesting the city to authorize that agreement. It will provide additional funding for engineering work on the city's street state project. This is another of the TAP awards that we've been working under, the TAP program with Georgia Department of Transportation. Those are eighty-twenty grants, so we would receive eighty thousand dollars from GDOT, and we would need to commit a twenty thousand dollar local match. And that would continue to fund additional engineering expenses on the project. So the motion, um, if the council is inclined to approve that, what I would ask is that you please make a motion to authorize the mayor to digitally sign the document. Um, GDOT does all their documents digitally now, so they still can write via email, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just have one question, do we have a timeframe on the completion of the project?
Yes, sir, right now, we're in the right-of-way phase, so all GDOT projects have three phases. Um, preliminary engineering work, which is basically where the project gets designed. Then it moves into the right-of-way phase, which is where you acquire the necessary property to actually be able to build the project. And then the construction phase is the last section. We're hoping to be under, um, we're hoping to let this, which means basically put the bids out so people can, contractors can bet on it, in the first quarter of next year.
So this is another phase of the project, we're through, I have no question?
No, sir, it's basically where, um, under that engineering phase, as we've worked through the right, right-of-way process, we've had to go back and make some small adjustments to the design. We've had to do some additional site visits with property owners, things like that, and we've gone into additional engineering expenses related to that. The Department of Transportation, through their TAP program, basically told us that they had additional funding that was available, that they would offer to the city as a supplemental agreement to our original grant award, and so that's what this is. Um, we didn't go through the formal application process, it was basically like, hey, we see that you're running into some additional engineering expenses, and we have some funding available that can help you. It's authorized at a hundred thousand dollars, we may not need that much, but they wanted to make the funding available to us as we move through the project, if there's any engineering work that we have to go back and do adjustments and things like that. So it's very helpful of GDOT, and I appreciate their willingness to continue to partner with this, partner with the city on the project. So just because we're awarded a hundred thousand dollars with a twenty percent match, we'll only use what's needed of that.
Any more questions? No more questions? That's our motion to approve, the request come from Ms. Payal, Emma.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been second in the first discussion. No further discussion, all those in favor, let me know, I raise your right hand. You're down, Mr. Senior, thank you so much.
Thank y'all very much.
Bring us down to number ten, Mr. Coachel, request beer, wine, lice, and company, not twenty-four, Circle Ranch fundraiser meeting.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you, so I'm here to request a, permission to, um, sell beer and wine for our, I mean, um, event, June birth, which is the Circle Ranch fundraiser, all sorts equal benefit festival hall.
Counselor, you heard the request come from Ms. Chu, entertain and have motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been second in the first discussion. No further discussion, all those in favor, let me know, I raise your right hand. You're down, Mr. Senior, thank you so much. And Mr. Borlow, Kyron Borlow, is in here. You're not here, bring us down to number eleven, unfinished business. At this moment, I don't have any unfinished business, careful, you have not finished. Secretary, you have not finished business?
Mr. Mayor, uh, in addition to, to, well, number eight, as we discuss the executive session, I have one legal matter to discuss the executive session.
Secretary, you have not finished?
Counselor.
Counselor, the middle?
Nothing, yeah.
Counselor, want to review?
No.
Counselor Smith?
Uh, I do have one question, to go back to Mr. Smith, um, he said he was renting a dump truck and a skid steer. I think one time, I thought one time before we had talked about when we were purchasing the vehicle, that we were going to purchase, uh, some equipment too. We gotta hit the update on that so we can kind of go away from the ring.
He's actually looking up prices for, um, a skid steer and dump truck.
Okay.
Counselor, you?
No.
Bring us up down to new business. I would like to, new business, um, Chief and I in discussion of a curfew ordinance. So I just wanted to put that out for counsel, I'm waiting for him to get back with me on some detail on what that curfew ordinance would look like. Try to stop some of this, this craziness, this madness that's going around the city. So I just want to put it on the table, um, next meeting. And so I just want to put it on the table, um, next meeting, we probably would have the information in front of us and we'll, we'll be voting on it.
So that curfew is, what word, an age limit, like a range of ages? Is that for young adults and just for, who do they pay?
It'll, it'll be for our, our teenagers, may, uh, for my, what's that, eleven, eleven to seventeen-year-olds. Again, I have more information on this than you do. You have any unfinished business, Councilor?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Smith.
City clerk, do you have any unfinished?
Miss Service, Mayor.
City clerk, do you have any unfinished?
Councilman Miller?
No, I just want to piggyback on what Councilman Moore just said. Or you, you're talking about the curfew, you said that you, you discussed it with the chief.
Yes, sir.
It's just a suggestion of mine, uh, Mr. Malmo, well, you know, what, way that my Carolyn, uh, um, just having the chief around the table, I, I think the way citizens, way some of our citizens acting and carrying on now, I think it would be a good idea if we had one or two citizens, maybe just sit in on it, sit in on it, on the discussion and make it, make it come up with something, but I, I like the idea of, uh, maybe having a curfew, but curfew, kind of with a curfew, we have police staff and, you know, we don't, we're limited to the police staff. But we have a curfew. I hope the citizen can understand that we're trying to do something to offset some of all this craziness that's going on with our younger, uh, aged kids, but they have to help the police, they can't be everywhere at one, at one time. I mean, they got to become that, but we, we as a community, we want to beat our police up on everything, if they do good, we beat them up, if they do bad, we beat them up, we ain't gonna come to them, nothing like that, nothing. And I just hope, you know, you consider these people, you know, sit around the table with you and we all have that discussion and since you brought that, evidently, it's, it's been on you to bring it up, maybe looking at a curfew and, you know, I, I don't, I don't think that's heard anything from in our city, especially, you know, what's, what is, what's going on now. There's not as much going on as I said, it's, it's just, just the people speaking in general. Just the people speaking in general, making, making it look bad. It, it real bad, so I think, I think that's a good idea, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little team, just consider some more people, you may say, I would be too many teams, I would. I'm, I'm gonna say no more, baby.
Councilman Miller, do you have any business?
No.
Council Smith?
Uh, I just have a question, I know we had talked a while back about doing a couple town hall meetings, have we got anything scheduled? Uh, so we can kind of put it out, I think that would be a good opportunity also to get the community in. Um, what Councilman Miller was saying, I don't know if you want to bring a select few, or you could just get a couple, uh, just open the doors up to a location and actually hear from the citizens of what's going on and their opinion, and then try to get us as a team together with the chief to try to move forward and see what's going on and how can we, um, adjust with all the things that have been transpired in our community for the last two to three months.
Thank you, tell us a question, though, we have not decided on a date to do, um, town hall meeting. Councilman Smith, Nick, you have any?
Any idea how long the curfew will go, or last?
I don't, again, that's, that is just up in the air right now, we're actually looking at another ordinance that the city has, and we'll, we'll take and we'll contemplate and change, make some changes. Uh, one thing that I did do, um, I met with this, with our youth council on today, and they were highly in favor of a, a curfew, um, ordinance. In fact, they, they gave some ideas on what the, what should happen on the first, second, and third offenses, and I was, I was shocked by the response that they had, I, I was really shocked. So I, I, I did sit down and, and we got those kids involved. So I think you'll be, you'll be amazed as well as, uh, excited about some of the ideas that they have when we, when we bring them forward. And they will speak on it, and they'll speak on it before we actually, um, adopt the ordinance. I don't have any public comment cards, um, at this time, I'll ask that we go into, go on to executive session for two legal matters.
Motion to approve.
He's gonna say, no further discussion, I will play the, I will.
Spencer, you being handy yourself, buddy, haven't seen you.
It's no fun in being, behaving, no fun in behaving.